Good evening, everybody. We are going to get our first inaugural Adams County Board of Health meeting started. It's going to be an historic event for us, and we're so happy that you all are here. Melissa and I will be facilitating the meeting today until you all choose officers, and we have, we're in the process of hiring a executive assistant for the Board of Health. So once we have that position started, they will be doing a lot of the meeting logistics as well. So Melissa's going to start off the meeting with a call, or I did the call to order, and then with the roll call.
Thanks, Kelly. So I'll start with our new Board of Health members. Dr. DeeDee Gilliam, here. Brett Keeling, here. Jeremiah Lindemann, here. Dr. Sheila Manke, here. And Dr. Lisa Wandler. Lisa, we can't hear you. Make sure it comes out with our sound. Nope, I think it's me. Okay, try again, Lisa.
Are your audios off?
Luckily, we have IT here. One more time, Lisa. Lisa, one more time. Come on, everyone.
Yes, IT, my bad.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, and then the Health Department Leadership Team. Dr. Kelly Whiteback, here. Brian Halabast, here. Adam Anderson, here. Darcie Martinez, here. Monica Builid, here. Doug Glenn, here. And then county, county leadership. Heidi Miller, here. Debbie Hardy, here. And Melissa Sicker, I'm here. Noel.
So I just want to make sure you all know Noel Fernal is our brand-new county manager, and he has joined us tonight. So if you do not get a chance to meet him, just know he's here, and hopefully you'll get a chance to meet him in a future meeting. And just, Debbie Hirti is with our People and Culture, our HR team, and Heidi Miller is our county attorney. And we have IT support and William with our comms team. He's our PIO, Public Information Officer.
All right, so I'm going to jump right into the agenda like Kelly said when we have Board Officers, and luckily that was our first agenda item today. Selecting a President, Vice President, and Secretary. And I'm just going to go through some of the statutory requirements for the President, and then I have Vice President and Secretary. So under state statute, the President can call special meetings. That can be done by others as well, you can see here. And the President's involved in finance and signing contracts, although that's also done in collaboration with the full board. Primarily, the President's role is meeting procedure. Calling the meeting to order, doing roll call, making sure there's space for folks to talk during the meeting, provide their opinion. The President solicits that. They don't make unilateral decisions or impose their will on the Board. They encourage everyone to voice their opinion and give everyone time to do that. As far as meeting procedure, parliamentary procedure, I will be here to help folks, whoever is the President, to do that. Will provide some information, how to make a motion, take a vote, get a second, move things forward formally in the meeting. So if you're not so familiar with that, don't let that scare you off from volunteering to be the President. The Vice President acts as the President in the absence of the President, so they have those same duties in the absence of the President. And then the Secretary, you can see here I put statutory language in blue. It's very subtle. But state statute says the Secretary is not a member of the Board. They're responsible for maintaining all records, and they ensure public notice of all meetings. They work with the Board President to develop the meeting agenda. They make sure materials are distributed timely to Board members and the public, and they facilitate communications between the Board and the agency. All officers serve at the pleasure of the Board, so this is all at your discretion who sits as an officer on the Board. State statute does default to the Executive Director as the Secretary, and you'll see when we go through the bylaws, that's in the draft bylaws, but ultimately you all can select the Secretary for the Board. So that's the only information I have to present to you. Now I'll turn things, and Lisa's here remotely as well, back to the Board to see if anyone would like to volunteer. We can certainly have discussions about who serves as the President and Vice President, but I want you to hear from all of you. Would anyone like to make that rationale, why you would be the President, and then ultimately, the Board will vote, make a motion to select the President and Vice President, and we can decide with the Executive Director if he's the Secretary.
Everybody, the hybrid meetings like this are really challenging, but unfortunately, we appreciate everyone along the way that are people here, but I couldn't hear anything that was said. Because we're always making trouble with her.
Thanks for that.
This is Jeremiah. I basically said I, okay, not being president.
Does anyone have Board experience?
Yeah, I have city council experience, so I'm definitely lovers and procedure. And I was not mayor, may I point out, because I never ran a meeting, but I definitely have that experience as a town in a council meeting, so I know the procedural ways. And I mean, if no one else wants to do it, I would be happy to volunteer. I also feel like I do really appreciate the mentioning of allowing everyone to speak so I could be volunteered in that room where it gets out of control and one person sort of takes over, so I would be happy to. But I also very supportive of everyone else who would like that role too.
I have Board experience, but I worked as President of the City. It's fair, no problem. Vice President.
Lisa, do you have any interest?
I have, I have some experience as a member of hospital committees and things like that, like parliamentary procedure. I would be kind of a bit of both of happy to do it, but also happy to defer to somebody else. And I'm super, yeah, committed either way. Kind of be happy to do it, but also if someone else has their interests, I'd be happy to defer.
Thanks, Lisa. Would anyone like to make a motion? Sheila?
I would make a motion, let me go ahead and vote on that. Is that putting my motion in?
Would you like to be President?
Sure, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
First and second. Any further discussion on Sheila serving as the President? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, Sheila, thank you so much. Sheila, who we are President for this first year. And this is a question in the bylaws about term limits on officers. So we'll circle back to that as far as if we want to put term limits. DeeDee, it sounded like you were willing to serve as Vice President. Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that I serve as Vice President.
Second, nice Brett. Any further discussion on DeeDee serving as Vice President? Awesome, all those in favor of DeeDee serving as Vice President this year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, thank you, DeeDee. Really appreciate that. We made it through. Oh, we'll do Secretary too. Although we can circle back with this for the bylaws as well. Right now, the default is for the Executive Director to serve as the Secretary. Any concerns with the Executive Director serving as the Secretary?
I've just mentioned a lot of times the Executive Director defers that role to the Executive Assistant. It probably takes other stuff.
I should have said that. So these duties, making sure meetings are posted in the minutes, we'll have an Executive Assistant that participates and takes minutes and make sure you all have that, but it'll be at the direction of the Executive Director. All right, would anyone like to make a motion to have the Executive Director serve as Secretary?
Move that the Executive Director serve as Secretary.
So do I have a second?
My second.
Thanks, DeeDee. Any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of the Executive Director serving as Secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, all right. And I'll send these slides to all of you so you have them, so you can see the statutory and extra language here. Next up on the agenda is the Board of Health bylaws. So you all have a copy of the bylaws in front of you. I put the bylaws into slides so that you can see, and again, I don't know how well you can see them, and you'll see the blue, the difference between the letters a little bit. So again, I put that statutory language in blue, so you can see things that came right from statutory language. You can see a lot of the extra stuff. So here we have Section 1, the organization. We went through how the Adams County Board of Health was created. That's not in statute, so it's in black here. So I'm just going to go through each section. If you all have any questions, you want a further explanation on anything here, at the end, we'll vote to implement these bylaws, and any changes, any edits that you all would like to make, and then I'll circle back with a final copy of that for all of you. So this is Section 1. The organization goes through the basics of how the Board of Health was created. It is the governing body for the Adams County Health Department. They have jurisdiction all over all areas in Adams County. And you can see that came from statute. And then we mentioned the Board of Health establishing resolution. The establishing resolution was issued by our Board of County Commissioners, and that's where they set membership at five members. And I'll actually, membership is next, so I'll just show you the details again. But we mentioned that resolution here, and I'm happy to provide that. We sent you all a few materials, like the Adams County Ethics Policy, some of those policies that are mentioned in the bylaws. So I'll give you that establishing resolution as well. And then just that these bylaws regulate the procedures in our Board of Health operations. So this is a lot of words. You have it in front of you. This is what came from the establishing resolution. You can see some statutory language here in blue on the slides, but mainly five members staggered terms to start, and you all received a resolution with your staggered term. Five years in the future, they'll be set. There's a two-term limit, so two consecutive five-year term limit. And then the recommendations here as far as diversity in the Board, this is for our Commissioners to use. They select the Board of Health members, and wanting a diverse group in ability, professional background, geographical representation, and thankfully to all of you, we have that. So, but this is in the bylaws and will go into the future. And I'll just say that any of my public health folks or anyone has comments, feel free to just jump in.
We're lawyers, you have to stop us occasionally. But seriously, if you have any questions, so, and I'm not sure if that is clear, but Melissa drafted this as a starting point for you guys, but it is your bylaws. So if you have any concerns or there's things that you, I wonder why that's in there. That seems odd. It's your bylaws, so please feel free to ask your question.
I would just note that it's customary for Boards of Health to review the bylaws on a recurring basis as well. We recommend annually, actually. So if there is opportunity, it would be important to edit or change them as well.
Thanks, Brett. All right, and Lisa, I see you too, so feel free to unmute and comment. This is Board Officers, so we just went through that. You can see I highlighted this in yellow about the Public Health Director. This is from statute, but ultimately, it is your decision. And so we decided that the Executive Director would serve as the Secretary. We selected that President and Vice President. Officers are selected annually, so we will vote each time. The question and the decision point for all of you is whether we want to put term limits on Board Officers. So to say, if you're President this year, maybe you're President for one more year, or you're not President that year, so we get a good rotation. And Kelly, I just want to turn it to you as far as any additional rationale for term limits on Board Officers. Do you have any thoughts?
It's just best practice.
Yeah, to rotate is best practice.
Yeah.
So it really is a decision point for all of you, and it can be whatever we'd like it to be. So one-year term limit, one consecutive, two-year, that's really up to all of you. You'll vote each year, either way. Make reference.
Okay, to the way, our two years. I would always want to fan around the two years, just that we get a little more consistency once you get past that first year or something, it's just going to be there. Kind of get that kind of cadence.
Yeah, especially as we're just now starting this big project. I think having some continuity would be helpful. And then as we look at, you know, because we got these staggered terms, so some of us are only here for the two years anyway.
Now you can refer to it after your turn.
Right.
So two years on the table? I'll say, we're the option of not specifying now as well. We cannot specify as council would.
Then for me, I would say, I think I'll put two years down for now. And then anytime we review bylaws, then that might be a discussion as things change.
Lisa, any thoughts, comments?
Yeah, I was thinking too, to kind of get somebody down there where they can see the things and then be able to pass them on.
Awesome. I'm going to say you'll vote each year, and then hold them all. With changes. All right, come on in through this. DeeDee's a Board Officer, so we talked a little bit about this. The President is an ex-champion of the City. Member of committee, so the Board creates committees, subcommittees. The President can participate in that. They run those meetings. They work with the Executive Director to create an agenda. The Vice President serves as the President in their absence. And then the Secretary, and then this is from state statute, issues public notices, all Board Members attends Board Members, and keeps them passed. This is a lot of language too. Almost all of it is blue. This is the statutorily required elements of our meetings. So state statute says we will have meetings at least once every three months, and this is the next action item, is our meeting schedule. Regular meetings, oh, this is additional language just to say that we can hold meetings remotely and that Board members can participate remotely just as if they were physically present for those meetings. Special meetings can be called by the President, the majority of the Board, the Executive Director. We will have a set schedule for our regular meetings, and then those special meetings, three days' notice, except in an emergency when it can be 24 hours' notice. Records of meetings, conduct of meetings will all be in accordance with the Colorado Open Meetings Law. Same with meeting notices here. And statute says a bar is a majority of the members. So this, again, in your, just going through the bylaws, it's all in there. Member conduct, conflict of interest and ethical conduct. This language was actually pulled from state statute for state Boards, but to clarify, that Board members should not be taking formal action on any items that they could have a direct economic benefit from. And then the Adams County Code of Ethics, saying that the Board adopts and will comply with that, and you all received that separately. Attendance, meaning Board members are expected to attend meetings regularly and in the event of an absence, that a Board member will notify either the President or the Secretary. Removal, this, most Boards of Health in the state have a removal provision here, making sure Board members are attending regularly, that if any members miss three or more meetings, that the President, the Executive Director, or a majority of the Board can proactively request that the Commissioners reappoint someone to that position for a member who's not attending regularly. And then vacancies, in the event of a vacancy, if a Board member no longer resigns at the county, if they resign from the Board or are removed, that the Board of County Commissioners will appoint someone in the same manner that you all were appointed. Finances, one change here from me in the draft bylaws that you all have. You can see the first part from state statute. The Treasurer of the County will serve as the Treasurer for the Board of Health and the Health Department. I had originally put that the Board will designate the bank in the name of the account, but state statute delegates that to the Treasurer. So the Treasurer will let you all know what the bank and the account is. You all will have that information, and you do not have to designate it yourself. And then just saying that all monies that come in for the Board or the agency go to that fund, that those funds are spent in accordance with Adams County budget and procurement policies, and you all receive that separately as well. That the Executive Director shall prepare an annual budget. That will be in collaboration with all of you. And then it mentions who that budget goes to, and you all will be involved in the processes that happens. And you all have the Health Department budget policy. That's the budget policy specific for the Health Department. The Health Department's a little unique than the other departments in the county, and so this walks us through how we will do the budget with our Commissioners. And you all have that, and it's, everyone shall copy it down. And then twice per year, the Board and the Department shall prepare and provide an update to the Board of County Commissioners concerning department operations and budget. And that's in that budget policy as well. The Public Health Director, again, you can see the first half of this is directly from state statute. The Board is required to select a Public Health Director. It was the term Executive Director, so that's what you'll see throughout your materials. The Executive Director serves at the pleasure of the Board of Health, and they're responsible for carrying out all relevant duties and responsibilities as outlined in state statute and regulation. The State Board of Health sets requirements for the Executive Director, and I believe we sent those your way, but let me know if you need a copy of those again. And then here, the Executive Director, in the second paragraph, shall be responsible for the day-to-day management and operations of the Department. And we put language in here about signing agreements. This is to get signature authority, right here in the bylaws. We are receiving lots of contracts and lots of different funders, and so making sure that that doesn't have to come to you each time. But it also says that the Executive Director will comply with Adams County purchasing policies. So the spending limit for the Executive Director is $50,000. It also says any purchases need to be in the budget, so you all will be aware of that. But anything over $50,000 will come back to the Board of Health for approval. Department staff, again, statutory language here. The Executive Director is responsible for hydrating all staff, setting duties for all of those staff, supervising all staff. And then the Executive Director will adhere to county personnel policies, and we cite a number of those. You've received the employee policies, I believe, but making a note just in case. Did you all receive that? Okay, I'll make sure you get that. And you can see here we call out a few pieces like compensation. And so that's that the county has a very robust scale of compensation that they are evaluating very frequently for all the things. All right. Powers and duties of the Board of Health. We did not list these out here in the bylaws. If we do, then we have to go back and change them. We haven't ever changed. Not changed. But they are listed out, and you've seen those already. Having an official tier of you guys on the way. Legal actions and judicial review, again, pulled from statute that the County Attorney's Office will serve as the attorneys for the Board of Health and the Health Department. See if I missed anything.
Including prosecution of your orders, violation of any of your regulations.
This is the last slide for the bylaws, just as Kelly mentioned, that we encourage review of the bylaws. Annually is best practice, and that we can amend these as needed. It requires that all Board members be present to amend the bylaws. That's just a little higher standard, and that it comes from a majority vote of the Board. That is the last section of the bylaws. I have one addition here, which is the two-year term limit for Board Officers. And then that one edit that I pointed out about the Treasurer setting the bank account and the account information. Questions, comments, any additional edits?
Listen, I'm sorry, I guess that didn't say specifically in the bylaws how often we would like to say, and review the bylaws, or is that not called out specifically?
It does not call out specifically. So this is the section that addresses amendments to the bylaws. We can make that just an internal policy. We can put that in the bylaws. If you would all like that, then we have to do it annually. So that's at your discretion. Lisa, did you want to make any changes to that?
Well, I do feel like it's best practice, like saying some sort of language of like, DeeDee, review of the bylaws will happen at least as often as every two years. So that way it gives us a little bit of leeway, or more often as it happens on the Board, something to that effect. Just to, you know, just to create that accountability within our part of the team that that's going to happen.
Yeah, and of course, when we review, we don't have to change anything, but we may. Two years, Lisa?
Yeah, I think that probably won't help to have to do everything here, although we have still a few exceptions.
That's all good. You can do it annually. That sounded to folks? Anything else? Any other, any questions with anything? Right. All right, so I have the bylaws as written, an addition of a two-year term limit for Board Officers. Review bylaws twice annually. No. At least every two years. Every two years. I wrote twice annually. Bylaws. Every meeting.
Just be assuming, yeah.
Every meeting. All right. Can I have a motion to pass the bylaws as written with the two changes, a two-year term limit, and review bylaws by annually?
Make a motion to amend the bylaws and approve them.
Let's start with that motion. Thanks, Sheila. The second, any further conversation, discussion on the bylaws? All right, all those in favor of passing the bylaws as written with those two changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome, thank you, guys. And the last thing for me, we're really poring through this agenda, is setting the regular meeting schedule. This will be done through resolution, and I have a draft write-up for the President to sign once it's passed. State statute does say it needs to be done by resolution, which is why we're doing it by resolution instead of in the bylaws or internal policy. Again, statute says that we have to meet once every three months, and that it has to be established by resolution. Maybeing Boards of Health are mostly meeting monthly. Sometimes more frequently as needed. We'll schedule those special meetings as needed, so this is for our regular schedule. The recommendation from the Health Department is monthly, and I just put in here an example, the first Tuesday of each month. That would put us at September 6th for our next meeting, which is in just two weeks, which is good because we have a few things to take care of. And then it will be monthly after that of us scheduling a special meeting in between if we need to. It could be the second Thursday of each month, just another example here. Kelly, do, I know you have some technical pieces of scheduling the meeting.
Just logistical.
Yes.
Right, so the, this building is closed on Mondays, for example, so it poses some logistical challenges just with having to watch both the central entrance and the southern entrance. and the southern entrance, especially if the public plans on attending. So our recommendation would be to avoid Mondays, and we also, a lot of staff are not in the building to help provide support, whether that's IT support or other staff. But I think we can make any week, day of the week or week of the month for it.
And Kelly, did you have a recommendation on the in-person versus remote?
Yeah, this is something to just think about. So we can hold these meetings however you would like to hold them. We learned a lot during COVID with just having Board of Health meetings be virtual. My thought is as we're, what I call forming and norming and getting them to know one another, it may be useful to have you all in person with our staff as well. So my thought would be to start off with in-person meetings for these regularly recurring, our regular scheduled meetings. And then my thought is the special meetings, anything that we might call in addition to. And there will be the need to have some special meetings this calendar year. And in the future, discussion meetings tend to revolve around some things happening. But to have those be maybe virtual. But we could also do every other meeting. There's really any sort of option in terms of format. My thought is staff and setup, and then also with the public. These are public meetings, so allowing public who may want to attend. I think the more consistent we are with that.
We do not have to designate in-person versus remote in this resolution for the schedule. And so if we need to hold a meeting remotely, we can do that. But wanting to flag that in-person component so that you all know if we're meeting monthly and you'd like to be in person, to keep that in mind for the day of the week and the time. So we'll set the day of the week and time by resolution. Consistency, ideally we would keep that the same, but we can always switch it remote. We won't, the reservation won't be designated.
Because COVID incidents goes back up drastically again, which suggests, you know, and that's something aren't you tracking and reporting on? So things like that may, you know, push us to go remote instead, but.
So we'll turn things back over to you. What are your thoughts on monthly meetings?
That sounds scary.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I was curious about what time of the day we're looking at, or maybe generally looking at the afternoon. We've been early. I have a future here with mobility, so my only right that I have patients scheduled on Tuesday nights, so I really can't do Tuesday nights. But I'm very flexible, and my days are a little bit more flexible. But I mean, for me, I kind of have, depending on the day, which time, which time we're looking at, also may be variable. So curious what people are thinking.
Is there a staffing issue with later at coming evening? Is there a problem at all?
Yeah, we can make that work. Most of our assistant boards and commissioners do make meetings, but you certainly could be during the day as well.
It's really at your discretion.
Yes, the evenings usually tend to be a little bit easier for me. And I think it also opens it up for a little bit more public discussion, because a lot of people are also working late here, so.
Yeah. What speed band do you want?
I think five thirty or later, and then a little later too. I don't know about pushing later, it's more difficult for resources here.
Lisa, I see nodding to five thirty?
Yeah, but five thirty is, I think that gives us enough time to get our stuff done and get up too late. But also gives us enough time to finish at the office and get where we need to go.
So I have monthly at five thirty. Should we pull up a calendar to look at day of the week? And yeah, it's just day of the week.
So it sounds like Mondays are recommended, yes, just because the building's just fixed. Tuesdays are around about four. Okay, Tuesday, so Wednesday, Thursday, so we know. Keep it in mind, yeah, because holiday.
I would call it Thursdays, and I will have staff every Monday.
Thursdays?
No, Thursday.
And also the other advantage to Thursdays is we generally have land use here on Thursday nights, so the building is open and staffed Thursday nights.
First is that. So I have monthly, five thirty on Thursdays. Are we okay with the first Thursday of the month, making our next meeting September 8? Have calendars.
I think September 8th is the second Tuesday or second Thursday of the month.
Yeah, thanks for that, Lisa. Oh, yeah, because the first isn't there, so I think.
Yeah, unfortunately, I have another standing board meeting on the second Thursday of the month. But maybe we can do the first or the third.
I can be fine with either those Thursday or Thursday.
I think that's fine. And if we need a special meeting in between, we can call that and call it remote as well.
So just this first, the first, September 1st, whether do the first of the month or the first Thursday of the month.
So I think the first will be too soon, possibly. I guess I'll look to you, Kelly. The first Thursday or the third Thursday?
I have no front lines, I mean, I think. Either way, we can do. It's really up to you all.
Third works best.
It's okay.
Third.
If they come close to holidays, we can set another meeting or something.
All right, for some times, if anyone puts a snow day or some reason to cancel, but a lot of times our evening meetings do. They'll just move to the next week or.
Yep, we don't get. We see that storm, and I call virtual meeting.
All right, so I have monthly, the third Thursday of the month, five thirty PM, with our next regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, September 15. Do I have a motion to pass a resolution setting our schedule monthly, the third Thursday of the month, at five thirty PM?
I motion to set a regular scheduled meeting for the third Thursday of the month at seventeen thirty, with the next one being Thursday, fifteen.
Sheila, any further conversation on the schedule? All right, the motion carries, and we will make one the third Thursday of each month at five thirty PM. That is my last item. The next item on the agenda is, I believe, executive session. So under general business, we scheduled an executive session. Heidi, I will turn it over to you for that.
Okay, I'm gonna leave this one today. And so I would ask that you go into exec. I have to give the statute or citation, in case you're wondering. I do not speak like this in normal. I would ask that you go into executive session pursuant to Colorado revised statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B and E, for the purpose of receiving legal advice and discussing personnel matters related to the appointment of the Public Health Executive Director. And so then you actually have to vote to go into executive session. If you need a motion. So we would need a motion in a second.
A motion that we enter an executive session.
I second that personally.
Perfect, all those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, and we will go into executive session. Lisa, give us one second, because we gotta rearrange the removal. Are we standing down here?
Okay.
Okay, here.
So then, well, I'm sorry about kicking everyone else out. Except for Debbie, Debbie's here for this purpose, she's hanging out.
And just doctors, what about you?
Nope.
Yeah. All right, I'll just bring us back to order for this first meeting. We just concluded our executive session. The next item on the agenda, under general business, discuss the Public Health Executive Director.
Yes, does the board be polite to go into the post the executive director position and convene in about one week?
Also, should we look at calendars to schedule a special meeting?
And we can direct county people and culture department to post it on the county's website.
And we'll also post a special meeting too, so. Let's see, next week. So I know, Lisa, you mentioned Tuesdays are out. We can hold this meeting remotely. What works for folks? And how much time, do you think? Sixty minutes, ninety? Less?
And you know, you can just specify. Tommy, you don't have to, you can just. Just a step to maximum.
What day and time works for folks?
Both would be better for me personally.
Thursday? Saturday first.
We will find daytime after four.
That day is not good for me. But I could.
Wednesday work, which is?
Lisa, does Wednesday work for you?
I think I'm gonna be on the plane on Wednesday at four o'clock. I was double checking my, I think I'll still be on the plane for that whole evening. So I could do potentially earlier than the day on Wednesday, but not that way of the evening.
We could look at mornings, do really anything.
I could do earlier on Wednesday, is that more for customers?
That'd be fine, thank you. Good job, some early afternoon.
We need to be done by, what was your, you won't be getting to the air, you'll be needing to the airport if that would have been the most.
Or Wednesday?
Yeah, I could probably do somewhere around midish or early on Wednesday, if that works for everyone else.
How early can folks do? German or I see what?
I have the middle of the day is kind of roughly, but I can do early, like seven. Especially during the day.
Seven?
If we're looking at daytime, we could do a Tuesday of next week also. Daytime is an option.
It limited by work, but I can do like lunchtime. Lunch on Tuesday. Hold it Tuesday. Other results, patients. So German or?
Yeah, I can, I can do lunchtime.
Okay. Um, it's Thursday, what time do you think you're on Thursday? To Thursday?
Thursday, I can do any time, all day.
I think you could early to like a three o'clock.
Three o'clock Thursday?
That's fine, okay. Twenty?
Three o'clock Thursday? Can you do a schedule? So September 1st, Thursday, three PM? Okay. So we'll get out an agenda. We'll post that with notice, and we'll get the job description up, and we'll make sure you guys get a link to that job description when it comes up. All right.
That's virtual.
Virtual, yeah, and we'll get Zoom together, and we'll have Zoom webinar, and so you guys will be panelists and the public who participate as well. All right, any?
I was just gonna ask that, any other questions or anything about that item?
I'm gonna fail, I have a little one I gotta get rid of for that, so. Very nice to meet you all. You guys are doing an awesome job. Like, you've really done great moving through everything, so. Welcome, and thank you for taking us on.
Thank you.
Excited.
All right, so the last items we have on the agenda are study session items. Kelly has a presentation for therapeut mandated public health services.
Yes, and so I was going to propose, because we're running late tonight, if you have to the next meeting. You guys have had a lot of information to absorb tonight and work through. So my study sessions, we can just postpone that one. I wanted to go through the mandated and foundational services that the Health Department wants to provide, just, yeah, have some information. I can share those slides with you ahead of time for the next meeting, and just, we can move through them quickly and just allow you guys to ask questions. And the future of Board of Health work and upcoming schedule, do you have some of that, Melissa? In terms of, I'm thinking particularly around the regulation pieces.
So nothing specific. We provided some information to you all about the list of upcoming work, like setting environmental health fees and regulations. We'll come back to you with that. That'll most likely be on our next agenda for the fifteenth is the timeline. And so the other piece of the future work and upcoming schedule was study sessions. So things like mandated public health services, like some rules and responsibilities and the work of the Health Department, and that will come from Kelly for a study session, so.
Yep. So it's kind of a study session on mandated and foundational, like the stuff that's required either in statute or rule. And then another following study session regarding those more optional and traditional optional services and kind of discuss the community. I would also like to bring in one of the population health epidemiologists from Tred County, who's currently slated to come over to Adams, who did the community health assessment. So I'd like to give an introduction to you all on a 2022 Adams County Community Health Assessment. That data, what does it mean? What was that process and methodology? Just so you all know, some of that foundational data. I really love that we chose to do that assessment. We did one when I was at Tred County for both the Radnor Land and Adams, knowing this split was coming or something was coming. And I really feel like it's providing a nice baseline for like, this is what the community's health website read at the onset of us setting up our new Health Department. And so it'll really be great as sort of benchmarking and providing that baseline information, so. And then there will be some opportunity to ask questions. That sounds good, and then as things come up, we'll continue to add, you know, things of better interest to you all. And we can also dive into more programs more specifically. Talk about monkeypox or COVID, if you have anything else you'd like to hear.
Yeah, thanks for that, Kelly. And now that we have board officers and things like that, you're here for us with agendas, and it will be collaborative things moving forward. So the next item on the agenda is just board member comments before we adjourn. Any, I mean, any requests really, like Kelly said? Anything that you feel like you need some more information on more immediately? Or? Or if you throw a little stuff back, I guess.
Yep, as you do, and you do a job of following the things that you need to be better at.
Awesome. I will have some final bylaws and that resolution for the schedule out to you all, and we'll get some minutes out to you too.
And I'll just mention this board meeting, or board member comment section, we will leave on every agenda. This is really an opportunity for you all to provide any feedback that you're hearing from the community or any spaces that you are in, bringing things to our attention, or, yeah, just sharing any information from the other community organizations that you're involved with. It's a great opportunity just for dialogue.
Kelly? Lisa, anything while you're in?
Yeah, thank you so much for checking back with me.
And Sheila, I'll circle back with you for meeting procedure, and the next meeting we'll hand it over to you, and I'll be here supporting and helping along the way, but. All right, well, I'll close this out all the journalists for today. Thank you all so much. This was super productive. Thanks to the Public Health team, and RT, and Heidi, and Debbie, and you guys did an awesome job. Thank you so much. All right, there you go. Thanks, everybody.